Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Building Commission meeting. My name is Joe Beely and I happen to be the Chair for the Commissions. This meeting may be attended in person or by remote telephone conference. Zoom conference access information was provided for the Commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate and notice on the agenda, folks will be on the town's website. For all those who are attending, I would ask that you mute yourself if you are able to do so, so we do not get any background noise. I have two very important reminders. First, every time you speak, you must state your name or title for record. Second, we must be careful not to speak over each other, so that we give everyone a chance to listen to hear what we say, and we also create a clear record for ourselves. For this reason, as necessary, when it comes time for the Commission members to comment and ask questions about a particular agenda item before an action is taken, and then to vote on that agenda item, our Planner, Maureen Gissey, will call the roll as needed. Also, the regular meeting is being recorded and recording will be posted on town's website. I'm now going to ask Maureen to take attendance by calling the roll.
Okay, John Michael O'Brien.
Excuse me.
Sandra Coppola.
Here.
Diane Joycey.
Here.
Timothy Zigma.
Here.
Brian Rogan.
Here.
Steve Wolman.
Here.
Chairman Beely.
Here.
Alternate Peter Zero Bozo.
Here.
Alternate Andrew Leggmanni.
Present.
And alternate Steve Biella Jr.
Here.
Before we begin, I know that one of our regular members, John Michael, is excused, so I am going to ask Peter Zero Bozo to be seated for the meeting. Now, we're going to do a little juggling, so just to give you guys the heads up, we have a public hearing because we have a new Commissioner who has not had a chance to bring herself up to date with the application concerning the greenhouses. Both of you were seated on that, so at that point, excuse me, Andrew, you were seated, and Stephen online, Steve Biella, you were also seated for that as well. So at that time, for that particular application of the public hearing, A, I'm going to ask that Peter Zero Bozo stand down, and Stephen Biella and Andrew Leggmanni will be seated. All right? Now that we've got it called to order, we're going to do a review of the minutes for October 21st, 2021. Does everyone have a chance to look at the minutes, and are there any corrections to be made?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wolman. I'll second. And thank you, Diane, for the discussion on the minutes. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, scheduling a public hearing, special permit site plan application for 1897 for all to equipment for the construction equipment dealers, zoning regulations, 6G3W and the related site improvements in 1897 for Earl and Turnpike. We have a suggested date of November 18th. Before I take a motion, are we going to be okay? Because I know, I was in the office earlier today, and November 18th is kind of stacking up, is, are we going to be okay to handle this for a public hearing? Are we going to be really happy on the 18th?
It's an existing site, so I think, you know, Fran and I looked at it and thought it would be all right if anything comes up, as long as the Commission continues to entertain that there's been issues in the reviews, that it may end up getting, you know, any one of those items could end up getting postponed if we've hit glitches during the review process.
Okay.
So, but it is an existing site.
Right.
Not new construction.
Okay. Anyone have a motion? Sure, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for November 18th. Okay, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Wolman? Was that Mr. Wolman?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. They all sound the same behind this. Further discussion on that, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Some of the Commission business, we have a discussion of the zoning regulations for the automated car wash business. Oh, I did? I'm sorry, let me go back. New business, request for Carl CRCA for the extension of the issued excavation permit at lot 127 block 72 Kensington Road, through the zoning regulations 10B4F. All right, what do we have?
Can I give a little bit of a synopsis? I thought I did see.
Can I interrupt, Maureen?
Sure.
Mr. Wolman, I need to excuse myself for a second.
Okay. Then, Mr.'s, let me see, Zero Bozo's on, so Mr. Leggmanni, seated for this issue, for this item. All right, thank you, Mr. Wolman.
Challenging week.
Everybody seated.
Um, so you all may recall that, most of you recall, a few months ago that the legislature extended permit time and approval periods in Public Act 21-163, and also that you, as a Commission, or the zoning regulations, approved an amendment to the zoning regulations because our excavation permit explorations did not align with project approvals. So, the, I put a quote in the comments I made, how of that regulation with regard to the 10-year period and whatnot, I believe I did in the comments. So, this application for the subdivision for Mr. CRCA has already gotten an extension to 2025. We, the new legislation will allow for a longer extension than that, but the subdivision currently is extended to 2025. That's 10 years from the initial approval. The excavation permit is set to expire this December, as far as we're aware, no construction has started, nothing has been done with regard to the excavation permit, they haven't actually activated it yet, but if they had provided the bonding and it triggered the time clock to start for the bonding, I'm sorry, it was really bad day. They, regardless, the time clock started, they only have two years, two years and two years previously, now we've got the regulation that says that the Commission can align the approval with the subdivision approval, so while the legislation allows for potentially the project to go to 2029 at this point, 14 years from approval, their approval stands right now at expiring for the subdivision at 2025, so the, in alignment with the new regulation, I'm suggesting and they're requesting that extension go for the excavation permit to December of 2025. It was, I'm sorry. It was.
Questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He said a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
One second, I'm okay.
Let's have further discussion. Do we have any? I, can I ask a question? I may, and I don't, the applicant's here, so maybe through, maybe I can ask, I mean, have we started this project at all, or how far are we into this?
So that's why I said, as far as staff is aware, I think he is in the audience, and you may want to get confirmation for the record.
Mr. CRCA, if you don't mind, can I ask you just a couple of questions? Have you started working on this project yet?
No.
Just come to a mic, so that you can be recorded.
Yeah.
Okay, right, I'm sorry.
You can wrestle with that.
Yeah.
CRCA 2226, Earl and Turnpike.
Okay. So, you haven't started building or excavating or doing anything?
No.
All righty.
I've actually tried to sew it.
Oh, okay, all righty.
And if it doesn't, I'll figure something else out, go ahead and do it myself.
All right. I don't know, because the only thing I would say about the excavation, because I'm not sure what, how much it's going to be, if you were to build on it, how much is going to be moved, how much is going to be removed, and I don't know if we talked about the path of the trucks or whatever that would be taking, if they're going to be excavating stuff off property.
That was, that was all in the approval, there's all, everything's detailed, which way to truck, the hours of operation, everything is done.
So all of that travels with them?
Yeah, so I was just about to clarify, so this is an extension of the approval they received, complete with its conditions and requirements that went with it, unless something changed in the regulations since, which it hasn't, except for this time limit, but then it would be revisited as to the applicability of new rules versus old rules, if something about the law changed.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so thank you for that.
Okay.
As I have no further questions, I mean, if you have any questions. So, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay. All right, so moving on, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're on to the Commissioner business, which is the discussion of zoning regulations for the automated car wash business and Earl and Turnpike zoning.
Commissioners.
Okay, also, we do have to receive, thank you, we do have to receive Mr. Wolman, right?
This one.
Or you sit this one out too? All right, you sure you guys want this table? All right. All right, okay.
Mr. Wren, 24 Kensington Road. I brought this up to you in the past, I've been approached by someone interested in doing automated car wash, these are kind of the high-end ones that they have, not a quarter one, where you actually would have a membership, much like a gym membership. At this point, they're looking at a property in the BT1 zone, presently BT1 zone has a two-acre minimum for car washes. Technology has changed since that was put in place, wanted to get your feedback on that. The other piece is, the property they're looking at, in order to make it work, there are 50-foot setbacks in both the front and rear of the property, and was looking just to get a feel from this Commission whether or not they think two changes makes sense, or if just the one acre makes sense, or if neither makes sense. Happens to be a very visible property north of Route 9, on the Earl and Turnpike, and really just a little quick discussion, so I can give this property owner or developer some feedback.
What's the property above, sorry, zone?
Uh, the property above's residential in the rear and BT1 on both sides.
Well, this is specifically, correct if I'm wrong, but the BT1 regulations have an asterisk next to, um, car washes, that they're two-acre sites, so that's the crux of it, so it would apply to any BT1, BT1 property, but the crux of it is that this two-acre is specifically currently specifically called out, so I think what we've identified as would be to be changed, to think the viability of some of the sites that have been looked at.
Number one of the two-acre BT1, 40 minutes, 50 seconds. In, with today's technology, yes, the 50-foot setback would be an addition that they would like to see, but really, it's the first one, that the fact that with the technology, they don't necessarily need the full two acres in order to make it.
If the person gives you an idea of how many acres they need?
Um, the one they're looking at is about an acre and a half, right now. So, they're not looking at 1.02, I mean, it's one and a half acres, so it just happens to be that it's not up to the two acres, and presently looking at doing something on the property, just wanted to feel this Commission out of, I think asking for both is a lot, truthfully, but I think the first one is a big one, whether or not you would consider it, I don't know. It is in there as two acres with the asterisk, so I'm sure there was a reason for it, I don't think anybody who's, or either myself knows exactly why, but it was more just overall discussion.
Another question, so then, well, if you're speaking for someone who's used in doing this, just, how big do they actually need? And that, now that's something a lot, is how much space does the car?
I think if they had an acre, a quarter acre, and a half without the setbacks, they couldn't make it work. I think that the 50-foot setbacks make it very, very challenging, really crunches the lot, makes it very tough, because both the Earl and Turnpike setback, and the resident, more so the Earl and Turnpike setback, because you're already looking at maybe 20 to 40 feet of state right away, so that's what makes it more challenging, being the BT area.
So, what, just sorry.
Yeah.
So, so off the highway, there's another 20 to 40 feet of state, and then 50 and half of that, is that what you're explaining to me, or no?
Yes.
So then it's almost 100 feet off the road?
Yeah, and not all of them, but most properties are probably at least that 20 feet of state right away, so it really makes us.
So much at least seven. Most is 20.
I would say probably the average would be about 20 feet plus or minus 20 feet half, because a lot of times, the state wants to keep any case they were deciding to make.
I don't have a problem going up with that. But, setbacks, quarters of the residence, where is that, that we look at? And I think, the wrong statement, I think that's a waiver of the setback.
And I, just, so, from a, having advised in ZBA as well, for quite some time, the, I think, one of the key questions that came up in my mind is that the car washes have the asterisk in the regulations for the could be developed, or may not, may not be developed on lots less than two acres, so that's really a specification of the regulations, if I recall correctly, a couple of years ago, when non-conforming lots that didn't meet the two acres, two acres is required in the BT1 zone for a property. So, they need a variance already, I believe is the current interpretation of the regulations, that they need a variance to develop a property that's less than two acres. To bring to the, to the ZBA, asking to give a variance where it was called out specifically as it can't have this, this, it can't have the exception, is where I'm seeing inconsistency. So, I'd lean towards a recommendation, and this is without deep diving with, with Chris into this, but is that to remove the caveat that appears that, that it really can't have a lesser acreage, or can't be waived by zoning board appeals. It could be, but any regulation, even with the asterisk, could be waived by the zoning board appeals, but I think if they looked at this and they saw an asterisk, as their staff person, I would be saying, it's specifically called out that it's not supposed to have unique circumstances, it is a unique circumstance of being a car wash, so therefore, it can't get a different kind of unique circumstance, or it, I would recommend that not be probably in what was the interest of the regulations. But, if any lot to be developed needs to be, that's under two acres, needs a variance of lot size because of their particular configuration, topography, you know, all the things that are allowed by a variance, I would put it more in the scene, light as everyone else, by removing the asterisk. That's my initial response, is remove its asterisk, to put it on even playing field with the rest of the properties in the, or the rest of the uses in the BT1 zone, as opposed to putting it in its own category of being allowed to have less acreage completely than anybody else.
I mean, as things progress, you know why we had the two acres caveat?
No, again, it's not been an active application, so yeah, that gets my attention first. I'm imagining that technology is ever-changing, filtration systems, drainage, filtration, et cetera.
I thought, I'm okay, you know, going less on the acreage, but the frontage, you know, it's got to be, I don't think it needs to be 100, but you got 20 feet of road, so you've got 20 feet of state, 20 to 40, yeah, I'd say 20's probably a good place. So, I mean, you know, it's got to be at least 50 to 70 feet back on the road, and I don't think, my personal opinion, I wouldn't want to change the setback buddy, the residents setback.
Okay, well, thank you, this is good feedback, and I appreciate that, and it's really a challenging one, that in truth, trying to almost do square peg round hole.
Yeah.
So, I'll get back to such, and I appreciate the feedback, and thank you, Maureen, that's when you get the overall feedback and talk.
We had an application years ago for car wash, I think with BT zone, and we wrote in, Earl and Turnpike, et cetera. Never. But, it was a problem with the dimensions of the lot, too.
This is the second time I've had to do something within two years, five years, so I know we did it a couple times.
Right, terrific, thank you, Chris. Okay, we're going to move into the public hearings, and the first item is a proposed amendment to Section 7F2B of the Earl and zoning regulations concerning greenhouses, and we have Attorney Brad, Mark Schaefer, here? Okay, now this is where we guys, we do that shift, okay? So everyone's on board, good.
All right. Do you want me to announce who's on? Who's on? Based on my list. Okay, so, Sandra, it's actually for Fran's benefit when she's typing.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, Sandra Coppola is now not seated, and Andrew Leggmanni, and Steve Biella Jr. are seated.
All right, hi.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you doing today?
Good, how are you guys doing?
Okay, good, good, good. Last topic, actually, you have quite a presentation. We are all just kind of going over what we learned about your business, and I guess because we're at the public hearing, Commissioners, I'm going to open it up with you first, do you have any questions regarding the application or the proposal for us?
Yeah, I just have a few.
Okay.
I keep the model as you presented, going in the right direction, but I would just like to bring the text to flip back. So, I saw a few things missing that I, I think there would be one in the text. One thing that I see is equal-friendly greenhouses that operate off natural light, I would like to see that for purposes of growing, so I would like to add in the text where it says, you know, would be there for life solely on natural light for growing, so no artificial light or some type of light for the grow, not for operation. Also, water usage, I have a little confusion here, you said one million for 10 acres, I didn't know if you were talking about, I don't know, 10 acres of greenhouse or 10 acres of land, P O D's don't have a minimum outside of acres, so, you know, like I said, this text is not only for what you want to do, but it's for the whole P O D. So, I want to make sure that this takes off, and you have the next person down the line, they're not using 20 million gallons of water, so I, that's where I really see this text for equal-friendly greenhouses, if you guys want to do. Text relating to how much water is allowed per year for that 10 acres. And then, the last real thing that I had is, the Chamberlain Highway is a nice vista in the town of Earl, the original setback that we have from the highway, I see you have roads 70 feet, and I understand if you started subdividing on the land, meaning a road 70 feet could be, 200 feet could be a challenging thing, but I think in order to protect that vista in line with the plan of conservation that we have right now, which you stick with that 200-foot setback from.
Anyone else on the Commission have any questions or comments? I guess I have some questions just for clarification of, with respect to lighting, there's no discussion, or we have not discussed, of exterior lighting, parking lot lighting, and so, that would be important also for consideration. I truth have the same concerns that Commissioner Rogan asked with respect to the scenic vistas, the plan of conservation and development, called on us to preserve the scenic vista. I'm struggling already with the amount of impervious surface that you're talking about, plus the height of the structures. I see this as perhaps more appropriate for the old Ramis property. I recognize there might be more site work associated with it, but I see this property as prime soil, but it's going to be covered up. The rate of impervious surfaces, I think, are excessive. And anyone else?
I have a problem with the, reduce the buffer. One spot says landscape, 40 feet, landscape buffer supplied by the entire perimeter, except for when they're chasing to lots, the own P O D, for non-residents. The, the, the front yard and the rear yard, 70, originally going down 40, and I think that, if the buffers have to stay all the way around at 40, you know, if something built, I decided out there, 20 feet of buffer, 40 feet is the, is the land part, but the buffer is only 20 on each. I think that should be 40, that's basically.
And thank you, Senator. Anyone else? We are in the public hearing, so if there is anyone who wishes to address the Commission regarding this application, yes, I would just ask that you use the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you have your comments.
You can use that bench, it's okay, just to let you know.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rain Stug, I live at 2270 Chamberlain Highway in South Kensington. I've lived there for 36 years, and I'm a lifelong resident of Earl. I'm also an advocate for local history and preservation, so whenever development is proposed on the east side of Chamberlain Highway, I remind people of the town's plan of conservation and development. The P O C D stresses the importance of preserving scenic vistas, including the trap rock ridges and views along Chamberlain Highway. It's still a place to see expansive hayfields, vegetable farms, and old barns, against the stunning backdrop of the trap rock ridge from Southington Road to Meriden. I love living out there. I'm also a proponent of organic food and sustainable farming. Lettuce grown in New England definitely tastes better, and lasts far longer than what gets transported from California. Growing produce locally makes sense, and keeping South Kensington agricultural makes sense. So, I've not seen the specific plans for HGO Farms' proposed development here, but I did drive down to Guilford to check out their present operation. Unlike the potential site here, the Guilford greenhouses are down a long driveway and cannot be seen from the main road. There are two very large greenhouses built in 1929, they're 26 feet tall, and as long as a football field and length, I think, I didn't measure it, but they're narrower than a football field. So I read the minutes from the last meeting and I tried to hear all that was said while viewing video, it's very hard when you're at home to hear people speaking. I only heard specs as related to the current operation in Guilford. If I heard correctly, it was stated that they currently use 1 million gallons of water a year. So I understand it's recycled through, so they're not continually using a million gallons. I understand how that works and that they have one tractor trailer truck picking up and delivering three times a week with some smaller refrigerated trucks. That's for a two acre site with two greenhouses. So what would be on 19 acres? This sounds like it will be a much bigger development. The text amendment concerns are over the 40 foot height of the proposed greenhouses, but I've not heard the size of the footprint of each greenhouse. A greenhouse the size of a football field would be 50,000, 57,600 square feet or 1.32 acres. So I'm curious how many greenhouses would be built on the 19 acres. If the greenhouses and paved areas are to cover 70 to 80% of the property, that's a huge development. It would fair ever change the scenic vista if massive greenhouses were built on all the parcels of land currently for sale in South Kensington. Is this scale too much? I mean, I'm asking, I'm torn between preservation and the future of sustainable agriculture. And worried it could wind up looking like a Plexiglas City in South Kensington. I'm hoping H two O Farm can build so their operation does not overpower the landscape. And I did check in today, I booked, because I buy Little League lettuce. I love it. It stays fresh for like three weeks, I can't believe it. And it's farmed hydroponically in Danvers, Massachusetts. So I looked at their website. And what they have, all the greenhouses are solidly connected, so it's like one massive greenhouse with the, like this. But it covers like 10 acres. But the difference is they've built in a site that looks like the middle of a forest, so you don't see it from the main road. So I don't know, I can't imagine creating a forest on Chamberlain Highway to surround this. Or it could take like 30 years to grow the same amount of trees. But that's kind of the difference we're talking about. Because when I drive down that road, it's going to be forever changed if it becomes this big. So I don't know what the answer is, but I want you to consider this very carefully. Thank you. Thank you.
Responses, I know we've given you a bunch of those questions, maybe I want to give you some time to respond.
Thank you. I didn't know if anyone else had wanted to make comments before, so I can respond to all them all at once, or you want to respond to them now, I'd be happy to.
I guess go with what you have so far, you never know where it's from.
Okay. The first, let me start a little backwards, going from maybe last to first. On the 40 foot landscape buffer language, that language is currently in your regulation and was lifted from your regulation. So those right, the P O D regulation, actually, that's what it says. So we didn't, we're not asking for that to be changed, we just put that into this part of the, of the regulation. So the, that is what it says today. And so that's not a, that's not a change. Second, on the exterior lighting, which is right above that, or two, two subsections above that, that also is from the current P O D. So again, we didn't, we're not asking for that. On the, on the non-use of light for, for growing. We would not object to that. One, I think, the only issue we would, we would say from, for that perspective is that it was solely, it wasn't used for light that's, that's visible from the outside, because there is the potential for inside the pack house, which would, which would be totally not, that it had any windows. Where they may use some grow lighting, because they are looking at other technologies that they may want to use other places. And so they may want to put some grow lighting in there, but that would be not visible to the outside. So the, the, because lettuce doesn't need, the lettuce they're growing doesn't need artificial light. So as they plan to grow, it doesn't need artificial light. What, what you would be limiting if you require there's no artificial lighting in the translucent part of the greenhouse, you would be limiting it such that only grows. Because you have to use artificial light. But that's not their business, so they, that doesn't bother them. It does understand that that's really what you're, what you're saying, when you say you can't use artificial lighting. It would still allow someone to come in and grow other things, other than lettuce, like cucumbers and things like that, things that don't require that heat. That, that to me was. As far as the water per acre, so we've, we've been looking at that issue significantly and trying to figure out what to do, because there's, there's really two, there's really two issues with it. One is said, we remind all the fact that we don't want to make people concerned about the offer itself. So we want to make sure that, that we, we understand that issue. The second is there's frankly a limitation as to how much a well can pump, you know, just technology wise, how much a well can pump. So, so the plan here would be to use rainwater capturing technology so that they would either put in silos to capture the rainwater or some type of a rainwater pond or something like that, to be able to use the rainwater to use for the, for the greenhouses. So putting a limitation of, of something like an eco-friendly greenhouse or something like that would, wouldn't be an issue for us either. Because we would, we would use something, we would need to use that technology probably. The the final, I think, issue that was talked about was this, was the setback of the 200 feet. Understanding that almost any lot in the P O D, if you have 200 foot setbacks, you can't build anything other than probably something that's stuck. You know, these, these lots of tiny lots, so the 200 foot setbacks is one, that's one of the reasons why we're here. Is because the setbacks really limit what you can put on an individual lot. The P O D itself, probably, I mean, forgetting about the fact that required sewer and, and other, and water as well, which you don't have in that area. But probably envision that there would be multiple lots that would be sold to a developer and that developer would then combine those lots into one large development, and therefore a lot of these large setbacks that are in the regulation would be allowed to, would be able to be dealt with. But on individual lots, it'd be very difficult to deal with, deal with the setbacks that you're talking about. So that's why we went down to the 70 feet and the 200 feet. Frankly, and again, the minimum side yard, the 40 foot was, was to keep in compliance with the buffers that you required anyway. So that's why we ended up with the 40 foot, where we ended up with the 40 foot side yard. On the impervious surface coverage, after talking with, it's just the, after our last hearing, we had gone down to 75 feet, 75% coverage. And then we had a conversation that the that gravel, which we can use instead of using pavement, we can go down to 70%. Because then that would, because the gravel would be considered, would not be considered impervious surface. We checked with the engineering department to make sure that they would agree with that, because regulations of pavement, we just wanted to make sure. It's a lot to deal with it in the site plan for runoff, but, but the, but from a regulatory point of view, it's not considered impervious. So we can go down to 70% instead of the 75%. And I know that it's just he was, was talking about putting in trees around the, as, as screening as part of the regulation, I think that was given to the commission, correct?
Yeah, so that, I'm sorry, that comment was added to the updated staff comments that were just to get it that regarding perhaps with the, you had a conversation with regard to, if I'm, if I may interrupt, I'm sorry, I should have asked chairman. Um, um, the, some of the comments heard when I was processing it, I thought, well, you know, reduce buffer, perhaps adding street trees is something that would then mitigate the expanse of a greenhouse, of greenhouse of the size that they're proposing to be allowed by this regulation. The wording, I wasn't, I was still working with.
But we also, we also wouldn't have a problem with that. There was one other minor change that we had talked about a little bit with our engineer raised that the word steel structure glaze, with predominantly rigid translucent exterior. They thought the word glaze meant glass, and we don't want glass to not put up on modern greenhouses. So he thought we should just take that out, so it would be a steel structure with predominantly rigid translucent exterior, and then in C, a larger stance of, instead of glazing, just translucent. So just using a different word so that you're not saying it has to be glass. I don't know if I read glaze as glass, but engineer, engineer sometimes knows more than I do about water. Those are going, that, that actually told me a minor change I have brought in for today, the other ones I really wanted to react to your guys' comments. You know, I do, there is the, you know, it's interesting, there, I deal with prime soil issues a lot, I do, I also a lot of work with solar projects. And there's a big, there's a lot of talk today about prime soils being used for solar, solar project at all. And fine forests and things like that. And yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, we talked about the Danvers project where they cut down 20 acres of trees. We're not looking to do that, right? We're looking to put this on, on farmland, that's currently farmland. And that we want to keep it farmland, right? This, this, this prop, these properties, what's going to happen to them? Because it's not economical to be a farmer, right? It's hay fields. For most people, it's a hobby, it's not a business. Let's be realistic about that. And what's going to happen to these farmlands when, when those farmers say, I don't want to do this anymore? Either they're going to become eyesores, because they'll be full of weeds and who knows what, what will happen to them. Or there'll, someone else will come in here and say, I want to build houses on them. But they're not going to stay farmland forever. This will actually keep it farmland, it'll keep the characteristic of that area as being farm. And it'll be eco-friendly farm. It'll, it'll be local farm, it'll bring good food to this area. So, you know, I, I, I think it's a tough decision, I, I'm not saying it's an easy decision, right? You have to weigh both those sides and I, you know, it's, they, they want to be good neighbors, they want to be good residents of the town. And I think that they've, they've shown that in the, in all of the different ways that they're trying to make this regulation work for us.
So I'm not worried. Sorry, with the text amendment itself, which is why I have the issues that I have, well, it's the last three. And I guess with artificial, yes, it might not be direct light, but if you do have buildings that have green lights in it, even with forests around them, they have upward glow, sky glow, and also it's fugitive light. It has some really dark beautiful skies all over South Kensington. And it's not just your greenhouses, it's the potential, you know, like you said, it could attract other. So I do think that needs to be addressed in this language where you don't have that upward spy glow ruining the night skies of South Kensington.
And I would agree with you, I, what I'm saying is that where we would put those grow lights would be in a building that wouldn't have glass on top of it. But it would be with, it would, it would be in a, the solid part of the building where you, where you'd be packing and doing, you know, changing rooms, you know, that kind of stuff. Would it be in the greenhouse part where the translucent part of the greenhouse?
All right, so we just didn't figure out, I worked that in the packs. Is there a number you guys are comfortable with giving us? Because the reason why I have the concern about water usage is because I remember talking to an old timer. City of Meriden used to have a well that, that they actually drew water from, and they actually had to shut it down. What I understand, they had to shut it down, it's, they're pumping so much water, they actually started to lower the water table and the salmon hatchery, which is right next door, start to rot. Which is why I want to put a number on it, like I said, I think what you guys, milli gallons, I agree, that's really not that much in all scheme of things. But I'm worried about the next guy or the next company that says there's no limit.
Right.
So I do want, if you need to go higher than 1 million, fine, I don't want to see the next guy coming up to 40 million or 50 million, and then we're back to that problem that we had all those years ago with water.
We have, don't forget too, it's, there's, I, I understand what you're saying, I, I assuming that you have a technology that can pump that much water, right? The, the issue, the issue you have is that's a, you know, there's not, these aren't town supply wells that we're trying, that we're also digging, you know, they, they, those would be regulated. We couldn't, we couldn't even dig a well like that. So I understand what you're asking for them, and I don't know if I can give you an answer tonight on that, I could try, I can certainly, my client's here, so I can actually ask him.
So just to follow up, then initial water to get to up and running, are you going to be trucking that in?
It would have to be.
From a whole different source.
It would have to be, because in, in order to get that source from the well that we would have to dig, it would take months. Yeah.
You know, I, I think it's an interesting concept and taking into consideration the different things I know about Chamberlain Highway and that sort of sense of the vistas that Stug was talking about. Because I am about it, it serves me as the overall size of it and how it's going to look. I mean, I've seen rose greenhouses on a Cromwell, you know, they're pretty condensed or whatever, they're a cash greenhouse. When I try to picture this, even though we're compromising down to a, if we breed on 30 feet height, it's just so massive. And I'm wondering, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how many are put out there, and I think they'll look like mushrooms sticking out of the ground.
Yeah, I, you know, I'll, I'll break open with you guys, I mean, the, you can only fit two on that property that we're looking at.
Do you want to be the size?
So each one would be 5 acres. Yeah, you can only fit, you can only fit two. Because the well needs a buffer, so you can't, you can't put, that would be a buffer.
And there's no way to bring the size of the greenhouse down?
It wouldn't be economical.
And then another question is, you're saying most of the lots prohibit your 200 setback, how deep is this lot?
So the lot width wise is 426. Three, width wise in the narrow part, but it's like a little L shape. So if you, let me think about it, so do you 200 and exact? The highway, so the rate?
I don't think.
So if I may, so I specifically, and I think last time, and I'm trying now to bring up the POD in general. But as Commissioner Rogan stated, trying myself in presenting to you guys, trying to keep it as general so that your minds would envision it on any of those properties. I tried to steer from having that vision in front of you, but I am bringing up those, the lots along the road. Up on the screen and for those of you online, I'll share it as soon as I've gotten in close to where I need to be. And Commissioner Biella might be able to confirm once I get it up, if he sees it. I would appreciate that.
Well, I think maybe just for perspective, because I was looking at the existing greenhouses in that area of progress, I don't know. Those greenhouses, I would estimate to be 12 to 15 feet. So what we're talking about would be roughly twice the height of the greenhouse. So when I recognize that driving through the area and the stuff down.
Yeah, I can see it, Maureen.
Thank you, sorry.
The stuff down of those greenhouses, because they're so far back, they're so small. You know, it's, so it's just, it was my way of being able to prepare at least in my mind, what we were considering for the entire, not just one person.
Yeah, these aren't, they're not. So currently I'm checking bottoms or whatever you call them up there. They're probably 40 or 50 feet high, they're sitting there. And those are probably 100 and 50 up the road.
No, they're not 70% overdone.
No, what I'm, no, what I'm saying is if you have something setback, a decent amount that doesn't, as Mr. Rogan addressed, and you still can see the vista. Nobody's complaining about the chicken buildings where you can't see anything because they're solid, they're high, you can't even see.
Those are storeable chicken buildings.
Trust me, they're not storeable. Far from storeable.
Can I?
The only reason they're standing is too much to take them down.
Can I describe what I'm sharing on the screen and then what I'll go to next? So in response to Commissioner Dorsey, I just drew a rectangle using our online tool around the greenhouses that were there. I don't think they're all still there on the property, the, the one that was better up on Sunny Borders property. I drew a rectangle around them and that cluster of greenhouses there is calculating out at about one, one and a quarter acres. So that's this rectangle just around that.
Lauren.
This one?
Yeah, the first one.
Sure, I can do lots. No, the amazing part is sharing it. This I've, I've done for many years. The other things are, so straight out, it's 500, about. Again, these are all estimated, they're. And then I actually was going to move up the street to those chicken coops. Is that them? Somebody help me. I mean, yeah, that's Apple Lane, so it's these. Yeah, so the one right along Apple Lane, which is the one I always noticed. It's at 214. The house is at 83. That's two, two buildings over, not that, not that house. The house with the, with the, the chicken buildings is on the, I'm not sure it has a setback. It's the one to the south of it is around 80. What else do you might want to see? Again, these lots, and I think if I pull up the other view, let me get back to the plan and metric that shows configuration of lots. So the POD starts up here, almost opposite heritage dive and goes south. So this is, but, so they just, you know, that's where he's talking about the widths and depths of the existing lots in the POD zone.
Hold on. Five acres looks like, and about seven feet above the Chamberlain Highway.
Oh, wow. That's what I used the pen in. I'm going to actually.
While you're enjoying that commitment.
I had a thought of a way that we could create a way to deal with the water issues. I think that's a thing we consider under people, I think it would be the, the next mystery of someone to say, greenhouses will not have a negative impact on the water. We wouldn't want that either, sir.
These two? I'm just going to click this to see how far, how big I am right now. I have, so that's eight, so that's a little, was a little big. Okay. Yeah, I can pull it up. If you don't mind me sharing, I'll pull, I can pull, no, you can email it to me and I can pull it up. I did, and then I, I meant not to click on it.
Basically, I can make a comparison for those lots, it's kind of right there.
So that, I believe that would be about five acres. I don't know if you all just heard what they're proposing is that they do have their sketch. They have their sketch and they're going to email it to me so that I can share that on the screen for the parcel they're looking at. You just sent it? Okay, thank you. I'll look for it in one second. Not sharing yet, so hold on a second for me. Would, can I just make a reminder that the meeting's being recorded for the secretary? So it's best if we get clear conversation. So now I'm sharing this.
What, just, yes, on the record, this was, this was actually one of the preliminary sketches. This is not the, one of the, we've done a second one, since then, but it gives you an idea. Shape that area right there. That's the, that would be one of the things. Before, we've, we've put a lot of pictures. Just, just use this for size. And then we put one right to the rear of it. Correct, and then the part that's the, that's above that, you go, I think that's, yeah, right there. That would be like where the well is and stuff like that, so we can't build in that area. Plus the, the property geography is not as flat as part of the property.
So this that my hand is on now is labeled as the well?
Yeah, that would be.
So then these radiuses around it are different setback radiuses for well uses. I don't know what category they would be in.
That's right, that's why we.
75 is the smaller circle, 150 is the larger circle.
Right. Then the lines around the greenhouses are required access roads for fire. That would be gravel.
My mind, I still have the problem with the aquifer there. That is a source going through our well. You know, anything built on top of it would be a concern. But that said, you said that you would put some kind of rain silo or, or something in to get water. Source to get. But there is not a lot of water down the street.
Yeah, we can look at that. Fortunately, they can't use that type of water. Or they have too much protection. It would be too expensive to purify it to be able to use it.
The same water runs around the lake, up the hill.
Plus, I don't know if we can get access to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Ameritan water.
Yeah, it's Ameritan water. But there is a source, and I don't know if that source has been addressed. You know, and it may be a source to, to bring in, not a presence of the aquifer underneath. It is a total sufferer, source of water in the aquifer. So that might bring water sources in for it.
Well, you know, I think, you know, Commissioner Rogan said, you know, I think we would say that if it doesn't have a negative effect on the, but we would not have a negative effect on the aquifer. And as we said, we've been looking at this, we know that we're going to have to, we would have to supplement water most likely anyway, just because of the technology of being able to pump that much water out of it. It's not, the pumps wouldn't work well enough to do that. So, so we don't, we're going to have to do that anyway. So the, I think, to address your concern, I think having that requirement that you don't have a negative effect on the aquifer, we'd probably trust that, that concern.
Question. What happens when you have to clean your hydroponic tables? Do you, you ever have to empty all the water out of them?
They never do.
We can use it and go for the same water for the last.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I can, I can, I'll, I'll say what he said on the record. They've been using the same water for the last six years in the building. They haven't done that.
Anything else, Maureen? Want to add or anyone else?
I think the, um, from the staff standpoint, so we, we did work with Attorney Mountshine to listen to what you had all said at the first public hearing and change up where in the language those concerns were. I think I would appreciate direction if, or some discussion, I guess, if you're going to keep it open or choose to close it, that we have some direction as to whether there's further modifications you'd like us to work on. If, if keeping the public hearing open, if keeping the public hearing open will also, I believe, need a, an extension from the applicant to keep it past the 35 days allowed for a public hearing to be open. So I'd request that that request be made if that's what you're choosing to do. If you're choosing to close it, it's, you know, then what, then those questions have been answered. But just, so I, clear direction?
Yeah.
Oh, I did have one other thing. I'm sorry, I left it open just so I could remember to do so. Um, I wanted to confirm that the question of outdoor lighting, the lighting regulations, the section of our regulations after parking and signs, parking, landscaping and lighting, we have lighting in there about trespass. The regulations with regard to trespass on other properties, for instance, the lights that are in the parking lot and things like that. That's all part of the site plan, but, right, but the lighting for the greenhouse itself, that's an issue of, that would, I think, appropriately belong, of the lighting for the greenhouses, et cetera, that, that, trust, the glow is something specific to greenhouses. The lighting for parking and site plan issues is otherwise addressed, that we don't allow trespass.
Sounds like. I think that's a way to address it. Proper word.
Well, I think, if you, if you wouldn't be visible light coming out of the building, so. Besides the natural sun, I think that's covered it and the packing is, the windows closed up and it guarantees some visible light. So. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, great. Which is already agreed.
Correct.
So I think it's just a question of how comfortable are we with the existing language? Do we feel that we'll need more, given taking the contribution to the owner? With the text the way it is? Should we leave the public hearing open so that we can get an extension from the applicant? So we have a more chance to consider any other language we may want to address or add to the regulations that's been proposed? Or do we feel comfortable enough with the way the text is? That we close the public hearing and then, you know, deliberate on that? Our role with the commission on this one, so how do we all feel about it? Strong feelings?
I think the conversation that we're having about the setback has been valuable and the consideration for the chicken buildings and the proximity of the chicken buildings to kind of give us some reassurance with respect to the preservation of the scenic vista that we're charged with. I, with that conversation, having that had, the 200 foot setback seems reasonable. And I understand the application. You know, I understand that the name of the game is production. We want to get as much production on the property as you can. Have to try to turn the land conservation development to, for the scenic vista that we have to consider.
Happy to respond to that. Like, I don't know if that's a statement or something I can respond to, so.
Well, it is the statement. Do have to consider that.
I understand. I mean, I guess I would, I would just, I would just say that if you. I would just say that if you are, if you would require a two-hundred-foot setback, they most likely won't.
There are a number of other parcels available along that same stretch. None of them is suitable?
They look at.
As if we, you have seventy-foot setback and everybody else in the district is seven.
I understand. I understand, I understand your concern.
And if you turn your second building, that was with the first building back. Might be able to get more furniture, but.
But the problem running through there is, is the geography of the, of that other piece, of the, of the upper parcel there. And the, and the second is, is got to be some of the.
We've got the well?
Well, well, the well has to have unobstructed radius of at least, I think it's seventy feet. Um, and maybe it has to be up to a hundred and fifty feet depending on.
Would it be possible to do the well and the two-hundred-foot setback, or is there something that prohibits that?
Uh, they weren't able to do that because we had looked at moving the greenhouses around and it wasn't, they weren't able to do that. Because, don't forget, here, there's, there's gonna be access in the front for, um, for the, access to the property and the driving over the. You can't do that.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with closing the public hearing, but I think that there's a willingness to consider working the language for that setback consideration. I think to keep things open and you're going to keep things open. It's a tough one.
Get through it, bro. Yeah. Just wanna. There, if you don't hear.
I'm only one, so.
No, no, no. We, you know, we keep on, we keep on going to a different location, different properties. We explore all of them. The sunny one, the show before we're in, and the one both belong to Pierre. We've retained those offers and the way that, it's the way it's situated. This is the third one we're trying to work in the last, let's say, fourteen months now. As opposed, this is the one that you don't have to really do. It's clear and almost flat, working. With the setback, it's pretty much. It's a lot of that. It's twenty-eight, almost twenty-eight, and you begin, you can, investment's not worth it. It's a lot of money invested. Can utilize everything, you know? If it, if it is, if we're going down, that's.
And, and again, it's two-hundred feet for the entire zone. A lot worth considering.
I think we're loose.
So there's, there's, there's no negotiating or discussing.
I wish I could tell you there was more room for us to do that, but the issue is that, you know, they're spending a certain amount on, as you know, they certainly spend a certain amount on the land. They have to have a certain production in order to get the money back.
And there's no way to cheat down the side of that first greenhouse to allow for that. Squeeze that buffer out of the first one. Is the second one still doing?
No, because again, they, they, they can't build.
You're telling me they need everything?
I just see, uh, that, you know, where your well site is, there's some movement of that second building. That's going first, then going out of whatever that lies everything back. I know that it's a plan we're looking at, wrong, you're looking at, except for everyone too. In the well site, that's a property. That back building, I don't know what, with that property back. I think it might be a property, but, uh.
At the end of, you know, at the end of the day, opening the green pond and these other things. Not that easy, but.
Look, you know, if the buffer, drainage pond is a fun, it's better than, they'd be enough next to it.
Yeah, but the water only goes down with the.
Quick question. So the, the second greenhouse is all the way to the end of this property?
No, it doesn't. There's, they'll, like I said, this was a rough drive.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, so.
Tell me what's behind it.
So there's, there are. There'd be a, a seventy-foot buffer at least in the back as well, with the trees.
So I doubt you can read it on the screen, but this line right here to this proposed building on the screen says it's forty feet. So seventy would be. You said there's seventy foot on the back. I'm sorry. I forgot what that was. So that would be another half of that building.
Yeah, and that building was the final one.
I'm just, I was trying to point out what the depth of forty feet was versus, you know.
The reason I asked is because I hope, and the way it is, is that you've got the greenhouse, and then you've got, I guess, the delivery or the cleaning building is gonna be right on the channel nine.
So that, that, that pad that's right there?
Well, yeah, that whole, like, triangle, yeah, what is all this?
That's parking.
So I guess my, my question was, do you have the space in the back area to put your home house or whatever it is that you're parking back there? That would allow that whole front parcel, that front piece that you're utilizing to come the buffer? Do you know what I'm saying?
And what you're trying to say, yeah. It doesn't. Because don't forget, they have to, they have to have a seventy-foot buffer in the back.
So also on that point of view, uh, there, right, the buffer, you're supposed to be landscaping. Parking lot right there would not work anyways.
So. But I feel like I'm negotiating here, but. So, whoever's. Whatever, if you, if you, if you wanna add something to the front, we'd have to take it off the back. So if you took, if you with, if you made a hundred in the front, we'd have to make forty in the back instead of seventy.
Okay, and in the back, what zone do we have? Is it, is that all mountain reserve?
Let me confirm that. I'm. Sorry, I clicked up that screen to pass. Give me Bucker again. I was just confirming that that's the way it was written. The buffer for the front would be required as well as buffer, not parking.
Correct, but they were.
That, the sketch showed it as parking.
Yeah, don't forget, that's the whole sketch. So they, they were figuring, they, the engineers understand where the seventy, where the forty-foot buffer is today. No, there's the forty-foot buffer and then the seventy.
So in, in the instance of this, if I may, for the, because I was asked to bring this up, if this is the lot that is being, you know, sketched out, this right behind it is still the P O D zone, but it is a residential use. And then we move in a little bit further to the east and basically behind almost all the other properties along the P O D zone are backed up to the mountain reserves.
Is the way the letter X is written, if that is forty-foot buffer and a seventy-foot setback, or is it seventy-four?
Combined. So your forty-foot buffer would be, would be part of the seventy-foot setback. Forty feet of it would have to be landscaping. The other, the other thirty is just not allowed to be a structure. It's a setback for a structure.
You just said that you would be okay with a hundred-foot setback in the front if we made it forty in the back. Is that what you said?
Correct, because we're basically, you're basically taking thirty out of the front. I can, I can now move the greenhouse back thirty feet.
Okay, so then, maybe I'm looking at this incorrectly. Why don't we just make it a hundred and seventy? The numbers look out the same way.
No, because now we're losing thirty feet.
If you're losing, you're willing to lose a hundred.
No, no, so it's gonna go from seventy, the front's gonna go from seventy to a hundred.
Never mind, I had two hundred in my head. I'm wrong.
I guess the question is, uh, coverage of the buildings. And I think you mentioned here is with the landing guy there. They should be able to get that building in there with some larger furniture up front, at least.
You really have to. Not like.
He's just concerned about that.
They gotta make it viable.
Yeah, it's gotta be profitable.
Anyone? All right. So what, what are we gonna do? I mean, the hour is, we have more business in the front of commission. This is something where you wanna close the public hearing and then deliberate, uh, no, or whatever, or do we wanna go for a further compromise and keep it open? Extension?
Can I remind that there are people online? I'm not sure. Their purpose, but if you just choose to close the public hearing, you should ask for their comments prior to.
I want to put the comments now. If anyone online likes. How was your time to speak up? Okay, no one seems to be typing in, so let's come back to the commission and find out, um, where we wanna go from here. I'm looking down at Ben and thinking, guys, I have questions. Make a motion to close the public hearing? Okay, well, we have a motion, so I'll ask for a second.
Commissioner, we'll say.
All right, so discussion.
We, uh, we still give more time to update the text, the regulations, what we discussed today.
I should be able, I should be able to do that. Yeah, I can make the, we can make the changes with the direction given. If there's questions with regard to that, then you could still modify that in your motion. But it would not be up for further discussion if it was, you know, it'll be re, re, um, distributed.
All right, so we have a motion. Let's move the motion. So all those in favor of closing the public hearing? Those opposed? I'm sorry, what?
I think there's, there's. Still, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it. Questions that the commission has come up. Person I gotta think about a little bit more, but, uh, you know, it just, I mean, it's a good project.
Yeah, well, that's, all right, so let's have a show of hands. Do you wanna do a roll call for the vote on this one? I'm sure if the motion failed or not.
Maybe easier to do the roll call and better for the record, if you don't mind. So, um, Diane Joycey? Tim Sigma? Brian Rogan? Steve Wallman? Chairman Veely? Seated Peter Zerboza? Right, am I correct? You're seated? You're not seated. Not seated on this one. I'm sorry if I, I didn't cross you out. I'm sorry. Andrew Lang Nanny? And Steve Biella?
Steve, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi.
And then I'm coming back to Brian Rogan. Okay, so. Five, five to two.
All right.
Six, seven.
All right.
All right. So then for the record and for anyone who's, um, listening and for the commission's clarification, um, there, it is continued to be listed on the regular under old business. And once a public hearing is closed, there's sixty-five days to decide that public hearing.
Thank you, Maureen. All right, so let's move on. We have a special, and thank you. Who was back with us? And so we have the special permit site plan application from Brando, uh, Buchanan, Artisan's Building and Remodeling to locate your contractor shop, including business activities, offices and showroom area at two thirty Deming Road. Okay, do we have anyone here for this application? Oh, you, okay, come on, come on down. I'm, I'm sorry, it took a little bit longer.
It was.
All right, so, uh, tell us a little bit about your project. What, what do we have?
Sure. Uh, I'm Brandon Buchanan, owner of Artisan Building and Remodeling. Um, so I'm a moving contractor. I've been in business for, since two thousand seventeen. And we exclusively do roofing, sat and gutter work. We currently, um, service all of Connecticut. I have ten employees currently. Looking for a bigger space to work out, so I have to keep operating well.
Trying to zoom in on two thirty Deming Road? It's the aerial you've got not printed very well. Can I give a little background? It was a manufacturing building and this is for you because the proposal is for a contractor shop use, which is a special permit use in the zone, so a change of use to a special permit use. Is for a contractor shop use, which is a special permit use in the zone, so a change of use to a special permit use.
Okay, is it, is there anything there now?
I can't make it bigger. That, I can't get any bigger. It won't, they don't, it doesn't go bigger than. So the building was built in nineteen sixty five. There was not a site plan on file for it. Manufacturer since nineteen sixty five with the parkings and drives around the building. They then provided the site plan. Drawing, which is all improvements that are there. The improvements that are shown that. On the plan are the striping for the parking, et cetera, the site site plan criteria that we need to know dimensionally fit within what they. Already have existing, but we didn't have a plan to develop. They are not, anything confirmed, they're not proposing any changes to the site, no new drainage, no. Changes to landscaping, no, they're not proposing any changes. It's an existing building. And in my staff report, I noted that we didn't have comments yet from engineering and wetlands. We have gotten those back and those were both no comment.
So basically, we're not changing anything. I mean, the use inside is changing and everything's going to be stored inside, all your materials or whatever that you need. And trucks or whatever or.
Yeah, just to clarify that too, like. Kind of back up about my business, like, we're a really professional outfit, all our trucks are wrapped, professional looking. As our industry first, we're not chucking chucking the truck. All right, like, we're, we're, we're a real outfit.
And your trucks are nice.
Yes.
The commission may recall back last year and you changed the regulations for storage. For the outside storage for industrial zone properties to be something that you had discretion. The zoning regulations had previously in some of the zones precluded the outside storage of trailers. On the regulation was changed to their special permit uses to give you the discretion to determine whether or not screening. Was required for where the, as they've shown that in this instance on their site plan, they show the storage of their five dump trailer. Or storage for three dump trailers, I'm sorry, along the southwest corner of the building. Right in this area that I'm circling right now.
Okay.
And I did make some staff comments with regard to the conditions and signage and other things such as that.
So commission, any questions to Pam at this point?
Presenting to Porter Goodison Road. Brandon is company of been grown for some time. They're looking to grow by investing to create jobs. He's a great guy. Economic Development Commission will unanimously support. I'm personally, I love this project, love what he's doing and excited for these looking to grow. We'll stay here, bro.
Thank you very much. Anyone have a motion to make a motion? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission regarding this application? Now would be the time to do so. Very now going back to the commission.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Wallman, second, second by Ms. Joycey for the discussion. The office in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, on to old business proposed amendments, but the zoning regulations concerning the greenhouses, I guess we're going to be. We want to deliberate this today or do you want to take some time and look and see if we can wrangle with this text amendment proposal? By the greenhouses.
I'd like to see the final.
Okay. A motion? A motion to.
Continue the.
Okay.
We're, and we're.
That's a run. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Sigma to continue the, I mean, to the, move to the next one, we have a second. Second, second by Ms. Joycey for the discussion and all is in favor.
Aye.
I know that you guys seated on that motion.
Can I get the second again? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a special purpose I plan or application for Brandon and Kenner are in building or remodeling to. Relo- to locate his contractor shop including business activities office and showroom area at two thirty Deming Road.
Make a motion to.
Thank you, Mr. Wallman. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Zarabozza. Yay, you get one in. There you go. Further discussions? Oh, so was that motion something to staff?
Of course.
Oh, okay, and the second understood that as well, the call, okay. Further discussion and all is in favor?
Aye.
Jeez, jeez Louise, all is in favor, I opposed, so move. Congratulations, congratulations. So with that, I'll follow the motion to let Maureen address the question. Go ahead.
So I just have one matter to bring before you, I hope, that's only one. You'll recall you approved the site plan amendment for climate engineering to start or to. The buffer be restored at climate engineering in the East Berlin on last month.
Yes.
For the landscape buffer, it's under litigation with the zoning board of appeals. And the zoning board of appeals is. Going to be having the stipulated judgment before them at the next meet, at their next meeting at the end of this month. But we did get word this week that the buffer that was approved, well, the approved, because they were approved. Evidently, the landscaper started the work. Which we should have gotten the the approval for, you know, and all the, it all tightened up in a bow. We didn't, however, we did go out there, the caliper plants that they've, they've had, they've got on site seem to be. Appropriate, they're all within what was designed on the plan as modified. They are doing minimal disturbance from what Carol and I could determine. They're disturbing what needs to be disturbed to do that and not. A lot of extra, so in conversation with corporation counsel and corporation counsel, talking to their counsel. Um, we've. Prelimarily given them the okay to get those plants in the ground during this planting season at the risk of if we wait, one, they could lose the plants. And two, that then they won't be starting that buffer until next year for sure. So wanted to get you guys all up to speed on that. You know, it's been a topic that. Has been conversed about lots and that everyone hears about, so we don't want you to know what the status was. We wanted you to know what the status was. And that the stipulated judgment is moving forward with. The zoning board of appeals, but it wasn't able to be heard at the end of last month. As it had been anticipated. Um, there are several items on it. I don't have the preliminary list in front of me. But it's, it's fairly heavy. We've gotten, we're getting a steady amount of applications in and daily. Somebody's telling me they're coming in with the, the deadline again, so. You know. Yeah, a little bit long probably. Again, we hit hurdles in our reviews that can always delay things, but. But I think a lot of people tried to get in before the holiday and and make it make sense and then we have some of these items that carry forward.
Okay, all right, so everyone else. So a motion, eight forty six. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes. We have a second, yes. We get some place, so all is in favor, I opposed, anyone? Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.